This is Thursday, September 1st, 2011. Work session in Mason City City Council. Called me into work. Is there a motion in a second to approve the agenda?
Shall move.
A second.
Sir?
On paper, say aye.
Aye.
Before I move forward, let the record reflect that all members are present. We'll start with number one, line energy franchise agreement. And we'll let Mr. Trout set this up the stage here and see where we're at with what we have and where we were last time with them.
Okay. What we did was went through the process of after our work session and met with Alliant and went through some of the issues to give them a better understanding so they could be prepared to address tonight some of the concerns that we had relative to the what they submitted by them. In the process, they did submit a couple of changes to, which I included, which were some changes to the notification that they would do during whenever they're going to do projects. And then also the ability for us to have the discussion about burying and, you know, sharing the cost relative to burying lines. So those were the two changes that they did make from the previous edition, but otherwise everything else remains the same, which basically is where we're at right now. So I guess at this point, I don't know if you want to go item by item from the last one or how you want to proceed with the discussion with Alliant Energy. Of course, they're here to help answer the questions or like you guys have anything you want to start with.
Do you have anything to open up? Before we start, can I get clarification? You said everything else remains the same, but I found all kinds of stuff missing.
All stuff that we had. I mean, what you received was their version of what they would like to see.
This is their version, not our version.
Right. That's their version.
Ah, okay. That's why it's so different.
Yeah, that's, that's, yeah. So it's not our version, it's their version as to what they would like to see for a franchise, adding in those items that I just mentioned.
Does anybody else have any clarifications or thoughts?
I don't know.
Okay. Yeah. Sorry about that. Missed what you were looking at.
Does anybody from Alliant want to open up before we start a discussion?
Yes, I have one. I'm Keith Sherman. I'm the franchise manager for Iowa. I'll interstate power and line now after all the mergers, but anyway, has anyone had a chance to look through the agreements, both electric and gas? Okay, so there's no need to go through them necessarily. So I guess we would open up for questions that you may have about the agreement that we gave back to the city after our visit with Brent and Tom.
All right, well, I'll just honor any discussion. If you guys have questions, you want to address them on Alliant. All right, folks.
Well, I'll cut to the chase. I'd like to see the agreement that we had at our last work session on the council agenda for us to either approve it or not. I think it's a much better franchise agreement from our perspective than us. I don't like this.
With that, there comes in, I didn't sure where I was going, and when we were able to schedule this meeting, there is a four-day requirement for, four to 20, for hearing notice for it. So September 20th would be the earliest that we can put it on the agenda, but just so you know. So, and we can take it, I have it, have a copy of it, and we can post it and put out the hearing notice that's required.
Mr. Marzus.
Well, from the last meeting, as we left it, you were going to make some modifications to ours, try and tune it, you know, where it didn't make that much difference. That's the way I understood it.
Right, there were...
But there were other things that you and we insisted we wanted to maintain.
Yeah, and I'll need to finalize those before we publish the final version.
So we didn't really do anything to our version?
No, not yet.
Okay.
No, not yet. I didn't want to do changes twice. I mean, we had our changes that we were looking at, we were going to have to do anyway, and then depending on how the conversation went today, include those changes and make them all one. Because I have the notes on this version as to the items that we...
And what did we have, what did we have to change?
Well, what we had was the issue relative to burying the lines, the annual report, the mass distribution system, and trying to tweak and make sure we understood what we were looking for there, and trying to tweak what we wanted for the notification. And then there were a few other just wording things just to make eye contact with exactly all of them.
My recollection is we talked very specifically here and I think this entire table, it's an agreement that we wanted to add some clauses.
Right, yep. Yeah, those are included.
Five, 10, 15, and 20.
Yep.
And I think that's something the council is very firm on.
Right. Yep, I have those right here. And the trees relative to items relative to the city, if the tree, being able to make the determination by the city that if the tree gets to a certain level based off of what they're doing, then we'd be allowed to follow behind and actually take it down if we deem that it is not going to be sufficient. And then section 30 relative to regarding limitations, five years each, which I think that relates to the terms of when they could open it. And then deficiency clauses, there was some question about with regards to whether that dealt with our ability to determine what type of technology, whether we wanted it to be available to be used in town. And that was something Max was concerned about relative to the type of, if there was something new that was going to be used as an energy source, that we would have the ability to say, no, that's in our minds, not something we want to be able to allow in the community to be done because it's a hindrance or harm, potential harm to the residents.
Mr. Weaver.
And also, we talked about piggybacking with whatever the utility board recommended.
Right.
We want to be able to have flexibility within the changes down there so we weren't stuck in the contract. Whatever might happen there, we have an opportunity to make changes just as soon as they did instead of having to wait within a contract five years, 15, 10 years.
Brent? Would it be appropriate for us to make some comments about the reasoning language that you put forth as opposed to what the city had as to why they made those changes?
Give me a few minutes. Why not?
Yes?
Well, I'll give you five minutes.
Okay. Well, what we did, we went ahead and listed some of the areas, because a lot of areas we did agree on, and we did put language into our contract and reflect that. But some of the areas that were asked about is areas where we really don't even have the ability to give that option to the city. One, I would, the rates to be set if we were deregulated, that is not something that we can extend, as it's not in our purview to do so. If we were deregulated, you would have the ability to buy power from whomever you like as well as the citizens would. So it's not really in our ability to tell you if we are deregulated, the city can enforce that. That's one of the reasons we didn't put that language in there. Next, the underground maps. The trouble we had with that is that our maps are continually changing. Every year we do work and they change to some extent. And what we want to do, and continue to do as we do already, is to provide you underground maps of where the work is actually occurring. It would be up to date and accurate. What would happen, we had a lot of work just keeping our own maps up to date, then all of a sudden you would have a set of maps that we would have to come over and try to keep those up to date as well. And if for some reason we didn't do that and an accident occurred, as you expected of something where a map indicated but it wasn't, it's just a real problem for us. So we have difficulty in providing that particular thing. Other areas, the new generation technology, that is another thing that we don't have complete control over. As you would think that we make, we make energy and we deliver energy, that we have complete control of where the electrons come from to service Mason City. But that's not the case at all. What happens is, is there's a controlling company called MISO that actually dispatches generation. And they say who's going to feed into the grid, and those people feed in, and it could be nuclear, it could be hydro, it could be, it could be us, and it is us often, but we don't have the ability to say at the town border of Mason City, we will not take power from a nuclear plant that could be running in Minnesota. It just doesn't work that way. So we don't have that ability. Some other areas, well, customer notification. We did put language in there, since we are going to be happy to notify the customer, but we thought we needed some flexibility rather than to be tied down to exactly how that's going to occur. So far, we've been pretty, we felt we've been pretty out in front of these things. Of course, occasionally something happens, and if you feel we need to do something different, we're open to talk about those things. But what the language had was fairly specific items, whereas we were looking just to make sure that the customers notified appropriately. Pole attachments, we okay, tree trimming, we're okay with that. Did I miss anything? Oh, the five-year, 10-year, and so on clause. We are making between a six and eight million dollar investment in Mason City, and that's an investment that we get paid back for over 50 years. And as good faith, we would hope that you would consider a 25-year agreement for that investment. We have no plans to do anything differently, but it is a lot of money, and it's hard for us to understand if we're making a long-term commitment to Mason City, why it wouldn't be reciprocated. So those are, I think, are the main points that we had that we were at some differences on. And my team and I would be glad to answer any questions you have about that.
Thank you. Mr. Marzus.
Well, I believe if we were to go back and check the public meeting, that you guys actually told us that we would have clauses to be able to get out of the long-term franchise from a previous meeting, a public meeting even.
Okay.
So, I mean, we were just following what you had actually told us, or told the public as well, that you would allow us to have a way out of the contract. It's my recollection.
Come on. Let's, let's... True?
Well, I, I know that, we've, you know, we've talked, you know, for the last three years about the agreement. I know I've been before the council a couple, a couple times myself. I know that when there was a Q and A, the question and answer document that you wanted a couple of years ago regarding a variety of issues, one of the issues, could we ask for windows? And our response was, yeah, we would consider windows if contained in 20 years based on operating off of our standard franchise agreement. Now, I understand the council last fall decided that you didn't want to work off of our standard agreement, that you wanted to offer, you consider your agreement, and then we would respond to it. And so that's the process that we're involved. So I guess in looking back, that's, that's the history behind it. Now, that's something that we're willing to discuss. I guess at this point, we'd like to know what are the council's intentions regarding, you know, the basic language of how we operate inside your city streets and rights of it, because that's what the agreement is about. So when we talk about regulation of certain issues, there are rights that we can't grant. But we're certainly willing to sit down with the city and work out any outstanding issues because we want to partner with the city. We want to get this franchise renewed on the electric side and, and on the gas side. So I guess we're just looking for your, your feedback, and we'll, we want to partner with the community. We've not come to the city saying, we plan to make this investment of $6 million. We've not come and asked for tax abatements or anything like that. And in terms of commitment, our vice president of energy delivery, Vern Gebhardt, has given the council a letter saying that we will build the facility upon approval of the franchises. But so when we look at the investment, we're looking at this as a, as a partnership, and that's why we're looking at the 25-year agreement. If there was a misunderstanding regarding the windows, you know, I'm sorry, that may have happened. I know you've talked to numerous people through the years, and we've had several discussions over the past years. But I do know that when the question-answer piece was put together a year or so ago, that that was what we had indicated, that when you asked, yeah, we would consider windows if we could operate off of our standard agreement, because I thought that would streamline the process because we are approaching the expiration date of the franchises, which expired, you know, last October. Now, we're almost a year again into the process, and we'd like to sit down and get that, get that done.
Folks, Mr. Trump.
Well, you know, we keep saying we want to sit down and get it done, and we talk a lot about partnering, and this has been going on for quite a while. And early in the process, we asked for some language to deal with some of the things that we talked about in the workshop. And what we got back several months later was just the same franchise agreement. So we got nothing, basically. So our staff spent a lot of time and energy researching franchise agreements all over the state, maybe outside of the state as well.
Within the state.
Okay, within the state. And came back to this council with staff's recommendation on our franchise agreement that quite honestly, the six of us thought was pretty darn good. And so we gave it to Alliant for a chance to pick it apart and, and to offer some constructive feedback. And the feedback that came back to us was basically crossing out every change that was made. So then, apparently, we said, all right, give us, give us what you would, you would have us do. And you came back with basically the same franchise agreement that we had in place for years with two exceptions. One is notification, and the paragraph on notification says you're going to make every reasonable effort to notify people. Well, define reasonable to me. What's reasonable to one person may not be reasonable to another, and we're right back with our citizens hearing complaints about Alliant and not proper notification because we disagree over the word reasonable. And then what was the other one that was added in here?
The ability to bury the lines.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Well, all that this did was put in writing that you're going to give us two quotes, and if we want to bury them, we're going to cover the difference between the two quotes, which is exactly what we do right now if we get in. So there's really been no substantiative changes to where we've been for years. I will support the franchise agreement that we talked about as a council at the last work session. I won't support this. And so what I'm prepared to do, if my colleagues agree, is put the, you guys are the ones that have been screaming at us for a year and a half that we got to get a franchise agreement in place, so fine. We'll pass what we believe to be a fair franchise agreement, and it's up to you guys. You guys will decide whether we have a franchise agreement or not. We're prepared to pass one.
Thank you, Mr. Trump. Mr. Weaver.
And we did talk about that at the last meeting, too. This is no secret, you're not dropping anything on them. That was the conversation we sort of had. Tonight, we had a, see, the taper cord's running, right? Well, Mr. Collins said tonight that, you know, unless there's something different we want to do. Well, I want to do something different. See, I'm one of those old timers now that's learning. I'm learning how to text and email and turn the computer on and the Googling thing, and I'm actually better than my kids because I'm more patient. You know, when I go to Google and they're looking for something, they don't see it in the first two pages that come up. Well, I sit there and I'll go through like 22 pages, boom, there it is, I find it. It's just a matter of patience, but I'm learning how to use those things. Same thing with this. There's so many changes going on in technology. It's crazy, the stuff that I'm reading, where, you know, there's think tanks out there that are 50 years ahead of me. I talk to my family, my boys, I say, you know, this is what you're going to be dealing with. Way, I don't, you know, so it's out there. I want to do something different. I do want to have clauses. I don't want to just have about service in our area and lines and poles. I really want to have some things in there that says if the Iowa utility board makes some changes, we can have those changes with us within a matter of weeks, not at the five-year, 10-year, the exits or 25-year. I don't want to be stuck. I don't want to be caught no more. And, and I also want something in there about windmills. I want something, and I'll tell you why I want it. I went to every legislative forum this year, and I did not see Alliant Energy at every one of them, if any of them. I went to every one. They're like in Mason City. They actually had legislators, not just from Mason City, but the surrounding areas, Republican and Democrats. I listened. They're going to be talking, the leadership on both parties wants to talk about the energy sources in our state that go leave our state. They make the rules. They'll be giving new roles to the IUB, they'll be giving new roles to you, they'll be telling you how you're going to... I want to be able to have clauses in there that let us represent the citizens of Mason City just as those rules are being changed, too. Now, if the legislature says they take effect July 1st of the next year, I want to be able to do that and not be hung up on the contract. I don't want to be hung up, our contract, well, our contracts for 25 years. I want to be able to roll with the punches, and you should want to, too. Secondly, you talk about your investment and that you have a 50-year payback. What do you think we got here? We bond continually. We have no, we don't have income coming in that covers everything we do. We have to stretch it out over 10, 15, 20 years, and even longer. I think our last budget was close to $90 million. So we got a big business here, too, that we're running, and we want to juggle that, too. That's one of the bad things about what we do here that touchy things is, is that previous council members dump stuff on other councils that really didn't have anything to do with those people sitting at the table now, and that was just four years ago. And then we have trauma in the community. So I do want to do something different here. I don't want it just to be about poles, lines, and transformers, and where the power's at, and why is the telephone pole six inches from the sidewalk on 19th Street? And when I travel and I see what other utility companies do, I want to, I want to be able to say, yeah, we're on top of our game. So I do want to have different things put in. But I agree with Councilman Trent, Chris, let's put it up for a vote, and then you guys, it's you, it's in your ballpark. So I do want some different things, because I did hear things are really changing. There is concern in all the states about the windmills and nuclear energy and how that, here's what I'm telling you real simple. If you build a nuclear plant out next to the ethanol plant, let's just say we did that, but all that power goes to California, how do I answer to the citizens that live with that issue? And we don't have a benefit of that. And that's exactly what I heard the legislators talking about. You know, it's kind of like Florida Light and Power would have been here for, what, 20 years with their windmills? So I want to be able to have some structure, some stuff in there that gives us some, that makes us partners, true partners, like everyone else. I thought half the, my, I thought, I looked at it, it was stapled, so I want to have everything. And, and so I was kind of wondering what happened, too.
Mr. Weaver, thanks. Who else? If you feel like where the council's at.
Yeah, I'll make the changes that we had talked about at the previous meeting and go through it again with a fine tooth comb. And I will, I will verify, Mr. Ivan Weber, who we talked about before regarding, to make sure that we have our hearing notice requirements. In the past, we've looked at hiring him, but now that I don't have Tom to back up, I'll talk to him. He's our expert. Make sure we're doing it correctly regarding the publication, and we'll get it set for the September 23rd.
Five, 10, 15, 20 outs.
And flexibility on...
I don't care if nobody's ever heard it before. To be honest with you, I think Mr. Weaver makes a pretty good point. We have, we have no idea what's going to come in the future. We have to have some...
I guess I'd like to just comment real quick on Mr. Trent, Chris's comment on the underground portion of that. I felt like the desire of the council through Brent and Tom was to have the option, like on an area, a large project where we had some overhead lines going in, that you'd like the option for us to bury that line underground. And I thought it was understood that that, the additional costs associated with that would be on the city, not, not on the rest of the customers. And so I thought the language we put in there was addressing your concern. And so I think part of this is kind of misunderstanding what your intent was. So I think that's where some of the disconnect was. And as far as the generation, the new technology in the nuclear power net, as Jim explained, we're, we are part of MISO, and we have our own generating plants that we, we bid into the MISO market. It's an open market, and the system operators decide who, which plant's going to run which day and which area for how long, just like Emery comes up during the day, some days, and some days it doesn't. So they, they do that decision based on what's most economically viable for cost production, and then also for reliability reasons, you know, if there's a transmission line that's out in South Dakota, then they know what, they know what power plants to bring on to help support the voltages on, on each side of that line segment. So a lot of that decision, as Jim explained, is really out of our hands, and I'm not sure that, your desires are valid, I'm not sure we can get there with a franchise agreement in Mason City. I just don't think that's the right form for addressing a concern.
Well, it's cutting edge, I realize that. But also, how's that selling the transmission lines working out for the customers?
Again, it's a pastoral right now.
I mean, we know why you sold them, and how's it working out for the customers? I guess I just want some flexibility put in. You're, you're not unlike us, you know? We, we make those investments. We, and by the way, there's many times that we pass rules and laws and dig holes and bury stuff and make stuff and spread the cost over the whole community that doesn't benefit by it. So I guess if we're talking about regionalization, partnering, working together, lean, being cost-effective, you know what? It's, that's kind of where I'm at, I think. I think there's, we need to sort of, it's all new stuff to me, it's old stuff to you, but somewhere in the middle, I'm just thinking, I'm thinking ahead. I'm thinking probably when I won't be around, and that 25-year franchise with you would be that. So I'm trying to do the best I can for the, I'm really, I'm really not doing it for tomorrow or for me, I'm doing it for, because it was a long time till our franchise agreement was up. I remember through the 90s, you know, and they would think, whoa, how much longer do we have? I bet, I bet you a council member at this, not just this table, but all the, would go to the city clerk or city administrator or mayor and say, hey, how much longer do we have? You know what? It's, that's kind of where I'm at. I think, I think there's, we need to sort of, it's all new stuff to me, it's old stuff to you, but somewhere in the middle, and I'm just thinking, I'm thinking ahead. I'm thinking probably when I won't be around, and that 25-year franchise with you would be that. So I'm trying to do the best I can for the, I'm really, I'm really not doing it for tomorrow or for me, I'm doing it for, because it was a long time till my franchise agreement was up. I remember through the 90s, you know, and they would think, whoa, how much longer do we have? I bet you a council member at this, not just this table, but all the, would go to the city clerk or city administrator or mayor and say, hey, how much longer do we have? I bet that question was one of the most asked questions there was, because of the changes being made and the things we, that's going on elsewhere. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Marzus.
You're going to go on elsewhere. I don't know. This is interesting, talking about underground power. We all know about the hurricane that replaced us. An interesting observation is North Carolina, it was one area of North Carolina... An interesting observation is, North Carolina, it was one area of North Carolina that didn't have power, because all their power was underground, like stored, so, I mean, underground power is quite far the way to go.
You got any, Mr. Trout?
Yes, sir.
Alright, thank you guys, appreciate you coming. Alright, we're gonna move on to the next item, number two, city attorney, human resource positions. Mr. Trout?
We went through, oh, I went through it, one, basic contacts, uh, contacts relative to who might be interested in providing services on a short-term basis for us. Mr. Woker agreed that he would provide civil, that was not interested in the magistrate board. Mr. Young said he would do both, like also contacted Hannibal from Hannibal Forum, and just because they've done some work in the past for the city. Didn't get a response back from them, but based on these two individuals that I feel could handle it, I felt comfortable just saying for the short-term, recommending that Mr. Woker, who also represents the Air Force Commission, has done work for the library, also does the Land Commission, that he would have the skills we need to handle the short-term civil issues that we have. And Mr. Young expressed an interest in doing whatever for the city, and so I thought that might be a good way to also get him involved, spread the work a little bit. I think now, about one, twenty contacts, most magistrate stuff is either Police Department or our distance inspection folks, so that would give them their point of contact related to it, and split the, the work out a little bit. So, my recommendation is to have council approval to hire those individuals for those areas. Put that on the agenda for Tuesday night. Then as far as the other part, really brought up questions as to what you wanna do long-term. Do you wanna look at hiring, uh, hire a city as a full-time employee again, or do you wanna contract long-term? Do you wanna contract long-term, our process for purchasing, our R P process, help initiate that for you? What you do the hiring for the individual based off of where we're at right now, for responsibility of that position, and then, or if you wanna hire an individual, begin the process of developing jobs, etc., etc., so that you can do the process of hiring, so...
Hi, Mr. Maris.
Short-term first, I expect that. Two hundred dollars an hour, attorney at the council meeting. I don't personally believe it's necessary, and look at the history. The previous attorney and the current one, I think would take place at the meeting, and we'd hear days later that, wow, we should have done it a little bit. So, I don't see that we do, does any question we can table some.
And I will tell you that there are many communities that do not have a city attorney present. Maybe if there's an issue, they do exactly what you said, or based on the advice they have, you know, the city administrator, clerk, whoever's president, they go comfortable with it, or they go ahead with it.
It's potentially that's eight hundred dollars a month, and that's just, be in the council.
Right. So, so that's not uncommon, your, your statement is very common as far as how you say something.
Pay yourself.
Yeah, I placed a point. I, okay, years ago, we always had part-time attorneys, and I think we survived. Unless there's some legal issue, forget the council, or, or the council, or...
Unless there's something more, he wants to be on the, the resources.
Okay, no, no, I would like to talk about both.
Okay.
Well, I think nowadays, more than ever, I think we need to search out experienced, seasoned human resources, the proper agenda. I think all these legal problems I have, seeing my two officers, it's not getting better. So, I, I think there's been some issues in that department. I think the reason why the magistrate has, we have Brian Carrot, full-time human resources. So, that's, that's a very valuable part of the state.
Name, Mr. Allison. Somebody else? Mr. Weaver. Well, I gotta tell you, I don't know about the rest of my colleagues, but since we see the word that could be tied, oh, it's resignation. I've heard from, I can't tell you how many staff and employees. And after all, the human resource is for them. Not for me, really, it's not for the general public, it's for the two-hundred-and-some employees the city all has and the other part-timers. So, I've heard a lot of, I think you're right, a seasoned person. But I'm also kinda wondering, does that particular job, and it would be harder to fill, I'm sure, but does that even have to be full-time? If it's just human resources, I mean, I've gone through many more years of one just part-time human resource person than I have a full-time human reso... We've had, we had three that I know, full-time human resource persons, that all came and left. But I'm not, I'm not sure, I mean, I don't get this warrant of full-time, I just don't know, I just don't know. But, and to take a page from my colleagues and the mayor and yourself, you know, let's, well, this is an opportunity to be lean, smart and lean. I'm okay with that, and, but I gotta tell you, it's a pretty important position, is from the perspective of all the employees. Of what I've heard, the stuff that's left-hand, the stuff that's gonna get, and emails, I think we've all gotten stuff. And so, it's, it is important that we have somebody that really knows what they're doing now. Does that person have to be twenty-six years old and looking for a career? Or is it somebody who is gently retired and still has twenty-five hours worth of work in him, you know? I mean, that's a lean thing, and can provide great expertise over their decades of knowledge, I'm just saying, I, I hope we...
I, I think the concern that I would add, that we're doing part-time, based off of your concern about the citizens, the employees being able to leave that person, address the issues as they come up, I think you really need to look at that person being a full-time person. I don't see how...
How many citizens showed up early for the concerns?
Citizens are employees.
Alright, excuse me, employees, I mean, really, I mean...
Well, we have employees that come in probably every day with some type of issue, whether it's insurance, I think there's a whole list of things that they'll come in to address.
Well, then there's the question of staff, you know, of the human res- resource, you know, I'm not, well, you basically, I guess. How concerned are you?
I think the other thing that I would say is that you're gonna have, not to say that it couldn't be found, or I think finding a qualified person, as Don's talking, if, if we wanna look for a qualified person, I think finding a qualified person that would not look for part-time should be very hard.
Well, let me just answer that from my perspective, 'cause there's all kinds of people looking for jobs, and you know what? If you're fifty years old, you're not even wanted, and there's so much talent out there, I just read a full article on that, and...
I think the other thing that would be an impact is that we would wanna look at a part-time person, and start taking a look at our policy regarding benefits. Because what might give us the layup, potentially give the person you're looking at, is partial benefits, uh, partial insurance, health insurance benefits. More, more interested in this type of position, because oftentimes, part-time hours with no benefits, it's gonna be harder to get somebody. So...
I'm just saying, I hope we really look at everything, it's, you know, I really do, I'm, I'm not, I learned a lot in the last few weeks. I hope everybody else has, you know. Go for the mayor's office.
I, I question how many companies that have two-hundred-and-fifteen employees, seventy-nine million dollar budget, but don't have an H R director full-time?
Well, and I think the other thing, what I learned from the past, when Brian Carrot was a full-time H R person, that he had, um, he handled a lot of the different paperwork that were required to be handled. So, you know, at that right now, in the past, if the, when the split, the system was split, almost all the paperwork filing was handled by the administrative assistant. So, could you argue that the department needs to be two full-time people? We might be able to argue that's not the case. The information that I received, Tom, this is calling around to other communities, and as far as an H R person, I gave you what we had, what I found out for an attorney, but for an H R person, most of those communities, the H R person worked alone, or had small part-time help. So, if we look at it, that's probably what we should look at, I think, that that way, that qualified person is available, address the issues and concerns that we have, and administrative help could be shared through another department. So, that's something that I think, I would suggest that if we wanna look at not having two full-time positions in that department, I would err towards the side of having a, a full-time, a qualified H R person and part-time assistant help. I think we'll have a lot easier time finding a qualified person to be our assistant than we will to be the H R person.
He has answered my question, he supports full-time and neither a part-time person.
If we want to go to that route.
I, I support you on this.
'Cause we've looked at also that if you go to that, um, what we need to do is do a complete analysis of who we have on the floor, and upstairs, within regards to Kevin's staff, the water staff, and clerk's office staff, and make sure where we might have any needs, can maybe a person be shared? Is there enough work that needs to be done back and forth, and can that person be shared?
Okay. One more question, may I? In the meanwhile, if we pursue this full-time constable, in the meanwhile, where the search goes on, who is handling that department?
H R functions will be handled by me, I'm used to handling them from the past, I haven't had an H R director until I got here.
You may ask if bringing more money doing that, but...
No, I'm not. Well, we do have a assistant, right, and she's continuing to stay on. And at this point, she's staying on, and anything otherwise, so she's a very capable person, and she's handling the issues. And her and I have met, and she knows what she needs to bring to me, and the types of issues, and how to reach me best. And also Pam will work with me, and I, you know, helping to cover the different things that need to be covered if there's any issues, so...
So, how do we deal with that if we'd like to have one person do the whole job?
Well, Sherry was hired as a temporary employee back at the start of this, and so then basically, she's still temporary. She's never been hired permanently because of all the, the issues relative to the situation with duties and responsibilities of this remire, and the discussions we've had, and so, so that, she's been on this temporary.
Well, Mr. Weaver, I mean, well, just knocking around as long as I have, don't we have a policy about how long you can be a temporary employee?
I don't think we do. Never move forward, because typically, we don't have temporary employees, so the only exception we had that we made, and we knew it was gonna be a long-term temporary position, Susan Murtagh was there for what by administrators, and we established what her hiring responsibilities and benefits, etc., without me. We knew it was gonna be two or more years for her to run through that program, and otherwise, no, we don't have anything specifically with regards to temporary employees. And a lot of times, when we hire temporary employees, we're only hiring from an agency. It's just recently that we found qualified people that gave me to fill temporary positions, and that's all they were looking for, was a temporary job. And so, we've gone ahead and hired a director that I've gone through a lot. The other thing is, it's also better, it's, it's not charged the same amount that we would pay, the employees are paid better pay in the long run, rather than having a temp agency taking time, so we have the better quality of people that are...
Chris Tropus, then.
Yeah, ideally, the decisions we make will be budget neutral to, even if we're lucky, may be favorable for the budget. However, in my mind, the right staffing needs trumps the budget implications. If it ends up costing more, we'll just have to figure out how to deal with it. I'm more interested in making the right staffing decisions, and to that end, I think this changed, just to give us the opportunity to separate out the legal responsibilities from the human resources responsibilities, and to support that completely. I would like to see those responsibilities split back out. I've given a lot of thought, as have my colleagues, obviously, in my mind, I've wondered, does it need to be a full-time position? Could it be a part-time position? I even wonder, does it need to be a city staff position, is it something that can be contracted? You, and, and you made a good point about the size of the city and the number of employees, and, and being a full-time position. Basically, I, I'm just gonna be looking for a recommendation from you, on whether it's full-time or part-time, and whether we hire, whether we contract it. You're the C E O of the city, and I think you're hearing the discussion. The one thing I do firmly believe is that we need to separate the responsibilities, and that would seem to be consensus.
And that, and that's what I need to know first, because that obviously has an impact on what I can recommend, because if I know that the responsibilities are not gonna be there, then I can wonder whether I staff them.
Well, and, and so I see this as a tiered decision. I, I think it sounds like if we had, if we could only fill one of the two positions, the position we're most interested in is human resources. That's what I think I'm hearing as I listen to the discussion, that's certainly what I think. And so, to that end, I, I think the plan that you have for Jim Woker and Mark, Mark Young in the short-term is a completely acceptable plan. Let's get human resources taken care of, whatever that ends up meaning, and run on this temporary plan, at least until, maybe longer. We may even wanna run it for six months to a year, just to get a better feel for impact on budget and delivery of services. And it may mean that we can get by without refilling the city attorney position. Maybe the right way to, to go is with a contracted type relationship. So, I, I don't feel any sense of urgency on the legal side of the ledger, more so on the human resources side.
I would point out, though, I think that, correct, it's necessary for council to get this separated out on the ordinance.
Yes, 'cause the ordinance assigns the duties and responsibilities to the city attorney.
Correct, so I think, whether you had a part-time or a full-time attorney, or whatever it is, we still need to separate the ordinance out, so it comes back under the administrative law. So, should we be getting that on, on the docket here quickly?
Well, what I'll get, based on what I'm hearing, and I, I guess, but based off of what I'm hearing, what we could do is, I'll have, at this point, two items on the agenda for sure. First one being to hire Mr. Woker, Mr. Young, to do temporary work for us, and, and legal side. And then, the second item being directing staff to change the, to draw up a change in the ordinance. That would be the second motion, would be to direct change in the ordinance to establish the human resources, 'cause there is still a reserve section in the city code related to personnel. And so, bring that out of the city attorney section of the code, and put it back in its own section, the responsibilities, as it falls under the city.
I just wanna finish up with this, I just, I just wanna clear the air about, you know, I'm the kinda guy that thinks he knows everything. And when we did this four or five years ago, where we combined them, I don't remember hearing really any input, I don't remember getting any emails or phone calls about, don't do that, shouldn't do that. But this time, I'm hearing from everybody, the staff and employees have never really liked having the two combined. I think Travis Hickey, a year, when he first came on, came to me. He must have talked to somebody, but talked about the conflict between the two and how uncomfortable it sort of was. I'm hearing it now, for sure, I heard it a lot in the last year, but now it's in the groundswell. So, I think we gotta look into it, if this is something we're doing for the employees too. They don't want the two combined, they don't feel comfortable with it, I think Travis found that out, and they don't. And so, I'm, and I also agree that, you know, we have three or four other attorneys in our artillery, that, you know, for unions and stuff, or legal stuff, or insurance stuff. We've had a lot of that covered already.
Yes.
So, I am not too panicky about that, and maybe it is a contract thing, maybe it is. And I also support, there's only two, two councilors that talked about not having council at the meetings. I'm, I think that's eight hundred bucks, or four hundred bucks a meeting is eight hundred bucks a month, I don't think we need to have that there, I don't either. I mean, I didn't think the majority here said that.
That is the next step that I would have, is to bring back the council to contract with Mr. Galloway from negotiations, 'cause we're about to enter into that phase. And we review his agreement, and while we're at it, he was working under, with some additional money, working under a, basically a retainer. Any items related to human resources, he would answer based off of that retainer. So, bringing him back in, and then he can continue to give us advices, to find new advice on human resources items in the short-term. Also, that means the department has an opportunity that if there's something additional, that we can go for advice from somebody that's an expert in that area, so I'll look at it.
Welcome, Mr. Ray.
I guess my, my initial reaction, I heard Tom's resignation, is kinda along with my journey also, part-time cost of city attorney, full-time human resource manager. I guess I'm not stuck into salaries or whatever, I'm comfortable with moving forward, and pretty much where everybody said. As far as I go, is if we do look at different avenues, as far as hours, cases, and things. I guess the biggest item where I've had, since I've been on the council, is some of the different situations that have come up. Not only discussions with employees, but some of our close session meetings, and I know, you know, from Costa working on this sexual harassment, something like that. I, I see it with real need, I think we can improve upon this, possibly, so, I'm, I'm pretty sure there's nobody else, so... And the attorney thing, now I haven't met councilman, that's why I'm trying to go off. So, I'm in no hurry to run out and shop, hire something. I'd like to see some different cost analysis, and try to see, just trying to make the best of this one, so, I'm on.
Getting the information as far as H R, staff cost per H R director, the number that I put is there for equal, that equal work issues. We gotta make sure that we're doing anything there, so we don't put ourselves in a bad position for a lawsuit, based on who we hire. But that also fits within the range of, if we can reach that Tom called and got information for me on. So, we're right in the range, and so I think it's something that we'll have to analyze. If we go lower, then we have to structure it a little bit different, and we may not get the quality person that we're looking for, so, I'll analyze that.
I don't love that script, though, either, you know.
And...
I, I kind of agree with that, so, I think we got some options out there.
I'll be on any charge?
No, each other. I'm, I'm open to discussion.
Well, I just wanted to come, and you talked about Mr. Galloway, if you're gonna contact him for help, for, for questions. We have three big employees or companies here.
here that you could probably call and ask about.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah.
First the principal and Curie's grand, we've got some pretty decent HR staffs around. I would try to have a first, but I'm just trying to see my...
Just over.
And that's just it, uh, to end with that conversation or continue that conversation, easy transition, you know, making a positive effort as well. And I guess I'm gonna kind of interject here a little bit. We're talking about attorneys at city council meetings and, and spending, what, eight hundred dollars. In here, it states that Mr. Young, um, does civil issues in magistrate court, you know, we felt we had to have somebody there, you know, if we needed to, he could serve the dual purpose of all of that. And they're probably two totally separate issues, but would it be just a little bit easier to have one attorney taking care of all these matters instead of two for the next thing coming down the line?
Well, I, I think, most, most of the time, I guess part of the reason is, is by not going through an RFP process, I want to be fair to, to potential people that are interested in doing this and assisting. Um, second of all, I guess, it, the two issues are different. Um, they don't overlap at all. The magistrate issues never end up in one's, and never, but it's very, very unlikely that the two issues are ever gonna need to be handled by the same person. Because we're doing criminal issues, misdemeanors, discipline fractions, those kind of things in magistrate court. It deals with talking to the witnesses that we have that we're bringing forward. You know, each of these guys already have a full private practice that they're doing. When we give them this additional work, they're gonna have that. And it's right now, it's not something that they're gonna be able to guarantee that they're gonna have long-term. So for them to hire additional staff to help with their workload, I think until they know that it would be a long-term contract, they're probably not gonna be interested in doing that. So, I think we divide it up. I think each attorney can handle the issues without doing additional hiring on their part or mess up their schedule that they already have now. And then, long-term, would it be best? It would really be best to have one attorney that's willing to be involved.
That, that, yeah. And then as far as looking for a new HR director, things like that, I, I am looking to, you know, part-time, full-time, whatever we got rolling there. Um, I know is that you have some days off coming up, so who's going to be our acting city administrator?
Kevin Jacobson will be acting city administrator in my absence. So, that's what, that's what we do. And he's basically gonna become the, the person in succession. Actually, Pam already threw up a change to the city administrative policy regarding succession. Um, Kevin Jacobson will be the acting administrator in my absence.
And just curious as to why that doesn't fall down onto the mayor, because if we do end up, you know, in the natural disaster, the mayor's the one that...
Well, the mayor has, he has, he has...
That could be a natural disaster.
He has, actually, according to city code, he has emergency authority over the police department and other types of things. It, it falls on staff, as the finance officer, and the next person, if Kevin wasn't available, the city engineer would be the person that would be next in line with succession. And so, there is a role that the mayor plays, and that's specifically just though in the code regarding the emergency powers regarding the police department. He actually, during the, uh, 2008, we signed a piece of paper by Mr. Ryan Meyer-Bang, giving me the authority to establish the curfew, et cetera, that we get. So, those, those emergency powers are listed within the code for the mayor.
We've had disasters coming up, as I just was curious.
Yeah, so that's there already, and the succession plan is in place, so.
One other question. The two part-time attorneys will answer it to you.
Yes.
Your vision no longer is in council?
And I think for me, the reason I want to do that is I want to keep control over the bill access by the staff. We can solve it at our level, we'll solve it. We have other resources, we can make those decisions, we can do that, so that we don't, like I said, so that our bill is manageable over the short term. I think that, uh, based on the numbers that I see in my communities, uh, it's a sixty thousand dollar a year type of thing. I hope that, hopefully we can avoid that bill and make it lower, but we'll address them if we will. We're not gonna go blind either. We've got a legal issue or we're gonna seek help.
I got one last question. Uh, just thinking about, I don't know, there's at least three attorneys with the county. Is there a possibility, I don't know if they're workloads and schedules and things like that, or...
Mr. Meyer enquired about...
Have discussions with them about possibly partnering up with the county?
Yeah. Mr. Meyer already enquired about, with Mr. Kayler, about the possibility of him doing our magistrate court. I don't understand at this time. I know there is, uh, there's one of the, one of the communities that I contacted regarding the city attorney use, they do contract with the county to do all their magistrate work. So, if there's a precedence to doing that, but short-term...
We talked to the supervisors, uh...
Yeah, I, I think, I think that's something that we could go for long-term, if we wanted to look at doing that, we could. Um, but short-term, so, yes, the city. But long-term, you, I think that would require, and then see what they would be willing to do, because a lot of the same types of cases that they're prosecuting, we prosecute. So, with our city attorney, so, I think the contract, uh, is the right piece of the thing, a support staff and all that, so.
Who else? All right. Thank you very much.
Keep it informed.
Good, I'm in business, so we're here.